Good afternoon. It is December the 6th, and it is 11:30 a.m., and City Council at this time will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code, the purchase, exchange, sell, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and finally, commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. Just for purposes of communication, this should be a fairly lengthy executive session. We plan to start City Council promptly at 2:00 p.m., so we will be in recess until 2:00 p.m., and we'll be back at that time. It is December the 6th, 2022. We have been in executive session, and now we are reconvening into open session in City Council chambers. This afternoon, we are proud to have Pastor Lloyd Zuniga with the Cross the Way Baptist Church. He's going to be presenting us today with our prayer. Pastor, if you make your way forward, I'd ask everyone please stand and remain standing after he's completed for our pledges.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today. Let's pray together. Dear Lord God, we thank you so much for this day you have given us. And Lord, we pray for each and every councilman and woman here today. God, we pray for your wisdom. God, we pray for your guidance and, Lord, to lead them. And God, we pray for your will to be done. Lord, we thank you for your goodness, and we praise you, Lord, for your mercy and grace for each and every one of us. Lord, may you be honored and glorified in all that is done here today. And we ask all of this in the name above all names, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If you will remain standing and join us as we say the pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Pastor Zuniga, thank you for being with us today. He has another job, so he gets to go back to covenant. Thank you, sir, for being here. Very much appreciated. All right. Appears we have no citizen comments today, so we will move to our minutes under 4 and 4.1. If I could have a motion to approve the November 1st, 2022 regular City Council meeting? I've got a first motion. I've got a second. Thank you. All in favor of approval of the November 1st, 2022 regular City Council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right. Approval carries 7-0. Next, we will move to the consent agenda under 5. It will be Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.28. It is my understanding, council, that we have a couple of requests for pull, specifically 5.11 and 5.21. If it's okay with everyone, I'd have those pulled out and discussed, and then pull those back in for one single vote if there's no objection. All right. Mr. Atkinson, I'll turn it over to you to 5.11.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We could switch the inputs. I've got just two real quick maps we'll put up here. Okay, here is your first one. This is just a little over a 1.3-acre tract currently owned by Lubbock Independent School District. The swimming pool you see to the left of the highlighted area, that is your May Simmons Swimming Pool. So this tract today, it has a tennis court on it that's not been used in a very long number of years. And then the land actually runs down the hill, kind of down to where the old football field is there on the south side of the May Simmons Lake. School District has been a tremendous partner with us. They are offering to deed this land over to the city. Council may recall that earlier we did fund some ARPA projects, one of which is a parking lot to support activities in this area, and that is what this transaction is for. Council, this comes at no cost other than the closing fees and the miscellaneous costs that go with it. Should you approve it today, we will be in front of the Board of Trustees at the School District next Wednesday for their final action. So I'll take any questions on this one.
Mr. McBrayer.
So, Mr. Atkinson, what would happen with the tennis courts? Do they remain there? Do we have to take them up? Or what will be the...
We will take that out completely. And for the part of this that's on the top of the hill, the flat part of that, it will become a full parking lot to support all the activities over there.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, yes, it has been a number of years since that tennis court was utilized. I had the privilege of the pleasure a number of years ago to actually be able to utilize those tennis courts because they were part of the E.C. Struggs Junior High School location. I just wanted to say that I think this is awesome, the partnerships and the cooperation that can take place between two entities within one city to benefit both of them and the citizens that they actually serve. So I just want to say thank you for the work in making this happen, Mr. Jared Atkinson. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Rollo, her staff, the board has been great to work with on this one. Okay. Mayor, with that, I'll...
I believe Ms. Joy has a comment.
Also allow for some parking for some of the cross-country that we do over there?
Exactly.
Okay. Good.
All right. I believe now we'll turn our attention to Agenda Item 5.21, and I'll also turn that back over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Also a good and exciting project. This one, not quite free, but pretty close to it. So you see the highlighted area, kind of in the purple color there on your map. The lake that you see, that is the end of Lake Six, so the Dunbar Historic Lake, Lake Six. That area is actually an abandoned railroad right-of-way that is still today owned by Burlington Northern Santa Fe. We were able to work with them for this transaction. That is today private property. They are willing to sell this to the city, and as you can tell, immediately to the north and to the south, that's city-owned property. So you've got orphaned or property that's difficult to get to. BNSF is offering this for sale to the city of Lubbock as the adjacent landowner. It is for $10,000. There's approximately $2,500 in associated fees that go with this transaction.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of Agenda Item 5.21? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I don't have a question. I, again, have a comment. I actually pulled a previous item, and this one as well, because I really want to continue to have us look at the fact that we don't always do things alone, that there are other organizations and groups that we have to work with and come alongside of and make some agreements with to begin making things happen. If you'll notice that location and that we're heading, we're heading somewhere. And so being able to do that is extremely important. I know that at a previous council, we also did some things not far from this location that will help us begin to head to the, what is that, southeast area? So it's just important to know that we can go to folks and build relationships, and folks can agree with some of the things that we're wanting to make happen, and at the same time, do some things to help us get there as well. So thank you again, Mr. Atkinson and staff.
Thank you, ma'am. We did blow that up. The prior transaction you referenced comes right off of the tail of that property there and carries across, and that was also a donation to the city by PICO. So these three items, two of them have been for free, and one has been at a significantly reduced price.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Ms. Joy.
Mr. Atkinson, why is this acquisition important to the citizens of Lubbock?
I think it's very important. It's a good topic to discuss briefly. All of this area in question has got multiple opportunities. Your recently adopted master park plan or park recreation open space master plan talks about the potential of trails, talks about multi-use paths. This is all a logical area in which this can occur. We will also work with Texas Parks and Wildlife. Now that we have the two tracks, the PICO tract and this track, the city should be able to receive some credit for it, and it also works with the potential of building literally a 14-mile trail section through the town that today we cannot do because we were blocked. You were crossing private property.
And it's part of what we anticipate and talked about in priorities is Lake Seven and the recreational benefits from this purchase, and the fact that we own so much property out there will allow people to hike, bike, all kinds of different activities.
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other comments or questions under 5.21? All right. Seeing none, at this time, I will pull 5.11 and 5.21 back in collectively and ask if there's a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.28.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. A motion in a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 5.1 through 5.28? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right. Motion carries to approve 5.1 through 5.28. That will take us to our regular agenda. 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 are board appointments for various TIFs. If it's okay with council, I'm going to read the names of those three recommended appointments, and if there's no objection, then we'll vote on all three of those with one motion. Under 6.1, I have Dan Wilson, Dan Williams, excuse me, as appointment of the chairperson of the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone for 2023 with the term ending December 31st of 2023. For 6.2, I have Sandy Hendry to be considered the appointment of the chairperson for the Lubbock Business Part Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone for the year 2023 with the term ending December 31st of 2023. And then for 6.3, I have Jeff Dane to consider as the North Overton Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone Board Director for 2023 with the term ending December 31st of 2023. Those names being heard, do I have a motion to approve those two members to those TIFs?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of those three board members to those TIFs under 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 all carry 7-0. All right. Next, we have Agenda Item 6.4. This is a held a public hearing and considered an ordinance for requests for annexation for Red Canyon Development LLC to annex approximately 17.33 acres southern city limits north of Woodrow Road and west of Quaker Avenue. And I believe there's some new information that may have arisen, Mr. Atkinson. Who do we want to turn it over here at this point before I open up the public hearing? Any questions we have, or do we want to open the public hearing at this time?
Would point to council, you have a new legal description of the area proposed for annexation at your dais. That will be the discussion today. Mayor, with your permission, we could call Ms. Sager.
All right.
There's exhibits that seem to be mislabeled.
They've gone to pull some documents. Mayor, we might want to move maybe to the later items, and we'll come back to this one.
All right. We'll postpone 6.4 here very shortly, and let's go ahead and move to Agenda Item 6.5. This is a second reading of a request for a zone change from single-family to garden office district that was held last week. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.5?
Can move.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. I have a second. Dr. Wilson, is there any further discussion of Agenda Item 6.5? Ms. Joy.
Yes. We took this up at the last council meeting, and my opposition is still the same, putting a recommending and approving a garden office in the middle of what is residential for as far as the eye can see. You know, when we look at these cases, you know, I come from a legal background, and justice is blind, but from zoning cases, we need to know, and the public needs to know, that it doesn't matter who you are, how much money you make, it doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, what sex you are, everybody's equal when they come to these hearings. And so nobody should have an edge over anyone else, and it should be done strictly on planning principles. My concern last time was what happened on the day before we had the meeting on Tuesday. And I had inquired of the city manager about some citizen concerns, those being some claims that certain parts of this annexation had been grandfathered, and also questions about a four-story building. Now, this is the day before our hearing. This is after Planning and Zoning has already approved a prior offer for a zone change. And so what was coming to us on Tuesday was a different proposal, and we're beginning to see these pretty frequently where what was proposed at Planning and Zoning gets changed. But the ones that really bother me, and it's kind of like 6.4, it didn't come to light until yesterday or today. And I don't think that's good governance, to be honest with you. I also wanted to clarify that at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Legal advised the planning director that there was an issue about non-conforming uses, and she was advised at that point in time. That message was not given to Planning and Zoning. Now, I get calls from Planning and Zoning members who are upset because of last-minute changes that aren't in their backup and that are presented to them at the time. And so I have a couple of concerns. One is, I don't think this zoning is appropriate. I don't think it should have ever happened. I know people up here disagree, and that's fine. That's what we're here for. And then, secondly, I want to clarify the record that our legal department had notified the director of planning about the concerns. When that came up on Monday, I talked to the city manager about those two issues, and he said, "I'll get back with you." I didn't find out what had been determined until we got on the dais. And so in between Monday and the time we appeared, there was a lot of running around, making changes, that sort of thing. I don't think that's the way this should, business should be conducted. In any event, on the day of the hearing, it was explained to us that Legal had said that there would have to be a change so that there would not be grandfathering of certain tracks, but Legal had advised us that the two weeks prior. And so I just want to clarify the record that we've got to listen when people talk to us, not just citizens, but also when our staff talks to us, we've got to listen as to what is going on. So for purposes of the record, I will continue to oppose this. It is a garden office and residential, which we've never done, and at the presentation that was made by citizens, they pointed out the scarcity of those. So we are probably setting a precedent for someone to come in and do this again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right. Any further discussion on 6.5? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of approval of 6.5? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign?
No.
All right. Motion carries for 3. Is there any question on who voted on that from you, Ms. Garza?
No.
All right. Thank you. Looks like we're going to continue to wait on 6.4? All right. So we'll now move on to 6.6? Is that where we're at, Blue?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll turn it over to you for 6.6.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good to be with you, and great to be able to introduce to you Item 6.6, which is what's technically called the Notice of Intent to Issue Bonds. There is a legislative process that we have to go through every time that we are getting ready to issue bonds. This, for the council, is really your first action in that legislative step, legislative process. So again, what you're doing tonight is contemplating the notice of intent to issue both COs and water and wastewater revenue bonds, okay? So this, what we will be presenting tonight has three different parts in it, and for efficiency's sake, we're going to do all of our issuances all at one time, save a little bit on cost of issuances and underwriter fees and everything else, some of those costs. Tonight, I have, or this afternoon, I have Matt Bowles, our financial advisor, and he will be presenting the full plan of finance. And I have Jerry Kyle, our bond counsel, who advises us on everything bond-related. So today, there will be three parts to this. There will be the first issuance, the first tranche of our $200 million GO bond that was just passed in November by the citizens of Lubbock. So we're going to go at those started. We're going to go ahead and issue those so that our teams can get the planning, the engineering, everything going. We do have one CO that we are recommending to publish notice of intent for. That is for your solid waste transfer station. And then there will be four water and wastewater projects, some sewer line expansion, water line expansions, downtown sewer line replacement, and the north terminal storage reservoir improvements. So those are the projects that are being contemplated in this notice of intent, and with that, I'll hand it over to our financial advisor, Mr. Matt Bowles.
Thank you, Blue. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Kostlich, for that introduction. It's good to be back in Lubbock. I think Blue did a very nice job of summarizing for you the projects and the three liens that we will be potentially issuing securities against. I wanted to start off, as we always do, and just kind of give you our sense of where the marketplace stands today because it's been a unique period of time, call it from March of '20 until this very day, and we still continue to deal with significant amounts of volatility, most of which you see in the press around the equity markets. But our market has the same sort of circumstances and conditions around it, and I want to make sure we hit that head-on as we go into these three initiatives. Obviously, it's a day-to-day read, but as we stand today, I'm happy to report that over the last couple of weeks, we've seen relative calm and stability. I hope that will be the case as we get through this initiative in January, February. A lot of that, I believe, is just the desensitization around people's effects to the news. I think we've had lots of discussion around what the Fed is going to do and what their plans are, and I think they've done a pretty good job of telegraphing that to mainstream America. And so as we go into this next meeting here the next week, we think we'll see the Fed increase rates another 50 basis points, which is a little off of what they've done. And so the run rate is going to slow down, we believe, a little bit, perhaps in a measured way of letting the effects of previous rate increases catch up to the market and hopefully see some results. We've got some narrative on this particular slide around that, and I'll let you go through that as you see fit. I did want to focus on the second page on a couple of things as it relates specifically to the municipal finance market, the first of which is in the lower left-hand corner. And we talk about this every time we come before council, but this is my Dow Jones. This is a daily read on our marketplace from 1 to 30 years, AAA MMD in the lower left-hand corner again. And as it stands today, we are operating around that green curve that you see there. And yes, it's off the 15-year average that we struck during the height of the pandemic, but right at about the 15-year average, which is still a very, very comfortable place to be for municipals and specifically cities and counties that are issuing debt in this marketplace. The other thing that I continue to talk about, and I want to bring it up again, is supply. In the upper left-hand corner, we have some narrative around supply. In 2021, we had a fairly robust national market that issued about $456 billion in new product. Now, our forecast for 2022 is $460 billion, and sadly, I will report that we were wrong, and we won't get anywhere near $400 million. I think the run rate right now is about $375 billion for this calendar year, so the inherent effects of supply and demand will be in your favor. There's just not enough supply to match demand, and we believe that that is one reason, that the curve is somewhat compressed up against what we've seen in the taxable space. So I think that's good news. And just to give everyone who's watching online, I like to go back to this because it just gives you a general sense of where we stand from a very broad swath of time. The macro environment is still very favorable for bond issuance. The top portion of this page is dedicated to the Bond Buyer 20. It's another index, published this one on a weekly basis and one that we track diligently. And it tells an incredible story. Since 1961, 82% of the time, this index rate has been higher. So it's still a very favorable time if you should have capital projects. There unfortunately aren't any refunding candidates available to the city right now that make any sense, so we'll just tackle the new money in this next tranche. With that, I will just very quickly, I won't go through each individual line item here. I think Mr. Kostlich did a nice job of teeing that up. There are three separate initiatives that we'll try to accomplish here with these financings. One is around your recently elected and voted general obligation bonds, and you can see those projects listed in the first portion there, just over $48 million in issuance, a very small CO, just over $17 million, and then the balance of the total of $81 million will go towards the water and wastewater system, and you can see those projects there. In terms of timing, we will be back with you in January to have in front of you an order that Jerry will prepare around parameters that will authorize your staff and administrative arm to issue these obligations should we meet certain parameters. With that said, we've developed a summary plan of finance so that you can get a sense of what we will be looking at as we walk into 2023. And as always, we've got some buffers in here to give us some conservatism around interest rates and things of that nature so that we deliver a product that is consistent with what we've been talking about all along. As it's structured now, each of these obligations is structured over a 20-year period. I do want to make a note that as we get closer to issuance, we'll be working with Mr. Kostlich to see if we can't shorten some of that up and maybe accomplish some prepayment on a quicker speed. These obligations, we'll go through the usual credit rating process. We'll be working on that. As we get into January, we anticipate the GO and certificates will be issued with your underlying ratings of AA+/AA- by Fitch NS&amp;P, and then the water and wastewater bonds, slightly lower but super-high grade, AA and AA-, from the same agencies. And then very quickly, I just wanted to go through each of the three issuances to give you a sense of what they look like, not only in terms of repayment but in cost of funds. This first one is your first tranche of your elected obligations, your GO bonds, which will be Series 2023. The middle column there provides some statistical information that should be of interest. Remind you that this has 50 basis points of cushion. I've highlighted the all NTIC. Again, think of that as all costs included, 4.33, so this is actually 3.8% money on a 20-year basis, so consistent with the theme that I spoke to earlier with respect to a lower interest rate environment. The next page is for the certificates, Series 2023. Again, we'll look at this amortization to see if it's something inside 20 years, but this is modeled around a 20-year payback period, 4.35. So again, you're looking at 3.8% money from an all NTIC basis on the certificates. And then finally, the water and wastewater bonds, again, the same paradigm, 20 years. Don't anticipate that we'll shorten this one up, although we'll consider that. 4.6%, which has everything in the world to do with a higher or lower rating, which would be a slightly higher borrowing cost, which would yield somewhere in the 4.1% in today's marketplace without the cushion. So as I said, we'll be back on the 24th of January with a parameters order to put in front of council, but at this point, Mayor, I'm happy to provide additional commentary or take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Appreciate it very much. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? We can ask questions of Mr. Bowles now, and then we can move to any further discussion once we have a motion. Yep, Mr. McBrayer.
Yes, Mr. Bowles. Would you explain about the optional par call at 10 years, and is that a fairly normal timeframe for that?
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate you bringing that up. On page five, and I've gone back to that for the viewing public, we note that each of these series of obligations has an optional par call, so callable at 100% in 10 years. And yes, that is a strict standard in our business, although we have found in recent years that going to, even a nine-year call doesn't yield any additional penalty in yield. So that's something we'll measure and take a look at whenever we get to pricing, so it could end up with a nine-year call. We do see some governments taking a look at shorter calls for prepayment. They get fairly costly, so I don't think that's the way we'll go, but it's something we'll always talk to Mr. Kostlich about.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Ms. Joy.
Will we also be able, assuming that these interest rates calm down some, be able to refinance on any of these offerings?
I don't think when we get in January that we will see enough rate decline for us to be in the money on any potential candidates. One thing that we always do, though, is screen every candidate and every lien that you have to make sure that that is in fact the case. And so as we get closer to this, we'll look at it. We've not anticipated that, though, in the postings or, but that's something we'll look at. The fact of the matter right now, Ms. Joy, is that they're so far out of the money, it would take an almost catastrophic event to move us to that point, so I want to be fair and honest about that. I don't think we'll have any refundings this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no, that was a strong no, worded very politely.
How did I score there?
You should have just said no.
I should have said no. You're right. No, the answer's no.
Thank you, Matt. All right, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.6?
Second.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, any further discussion on 6.6? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Joy.
I just want the public to know that the general obligation bonds are for the streets that the citizens voted to have done. The other two are revenue bonds that are tied to the enterprise funds of water and wastewater, correct?
Correct.
And will be paid by the users of those water and wastewater improvements.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on 6.6? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.6? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By like sign. Motion carries 7-0. All right, now it looks like, thank you, Matt, thank you, Blue, it looks like we're ready to go back to 6.4. I think if, with council's approval, I'll go ahead and get an update by Kristin, and then, once we have that information and maybe our new Exhibit A that you have in front of you, then we'll open it up for the public hearing. All right, Ms. Sager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are actually passing out a revised version of that exhibit. It is now named Exhibit B. It's the same information, just different exhibit, Exhibit B instead of Exhibit A. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the public hearing and first ordinance reading of the annexation of property at Quaker Avenue and Woodrow Road. You approved the annexation agreement at your November 1st meeting. The agenda advertises 17.33 acres. It has been revised to 16.05 acres. The revision pulls the annex, area proposed for annexation off of the right-of-way lines from Quaker Avenue and Woodrow Road, which I can explain in further detail if you'd like, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Kristin, would you go ahead and explain briefly just the difference, what was the meaning of a new exhibit presented at this time?
So the exhibit in your packet, the original 17.33 acres, included the existing 55 feet of dedicated right-of-way on the west side of Quaker Avenue. What we discovered through additional research, and I have a zoomed-in version of this map from Lubbock County, this is one of their parcel viewers that shows right-of-way lines, is that there is a 20-foot line, this gray line right here, so 20 feet between the center line of Quaker and the 55 feet to the west, 20 feet to the east, that is considered historic right-of-way. And since that was not included in the 17.33 acres originally presented, we would not have been able to move forward with just the 55 feet. We wanted to be able to move forward today with the first reading of this annexation, and so the applicant revised the meets and bounds to pull back from the right-of-way line, so we're not required to include the right-of-way with this new proposal. However, he is going to submit a petition to clean that up and bring back in that 10 feet of private property as well as the 75 feet of right-of-way over to that historic right-of-way line.
And when will that petition be brought back to us?
Since the second reading of this proposal will be next week on the 13th, we expect it to have it before the 13th. My office will receive the petition before the 13th. We'll go through the process and bring it to you as soon as we can.
And so, Mr. Weaver, if we move forward on 6.4, we could just adopt Exhibit B as the new exhibit to the Agenda Item 6.4?
That's correct. It's less property, not more, as long as the council as a whole understands and there's no objection that Exhibit B does reflect the will of the council to annex that particular property. I think you could just vote on the motion with everyone's understanding that the new Exhibit B is what you're voting on. By the time the second reading comes around, we'll have changed any conforming changes we need to make to reflect the proper acreage throughout the ordinance.
All right. Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions about what Mr. Weaver just said? All right, Ms. Joy.
I had a question for Ms. Sager. My understanding was that the reason we discovered this was because the county contacted us about our oversight. Is that correct?
That's correct. They contacted us last week. We notified them of this pending annexation and right-of-way back in August.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager at this time? She'll be available if necessary. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider the annexation of property. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of approximately 16.05 acres. And that will change from council's notes, 16.05 acres adjacent to the southern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of Woodrow Road and west of Quaker Avenue. If there is anyone who wishes to speak against this annexation, you may approach at this time. If you do approach, please state your name and your address, so I'll open it up to anyone wishing to speak against this annexation. All right, seeing none, I will next open it up to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the annexation. You may approach. Good afternoon, Mr. Payne.
Mayor. Thomas Payne, 15309, FM 1730 in Lubbock County. Mayor, Council, I just wanted to speak briefly, first, to thank the effort on the part of your staff, and I'm sure the council as well, to find a way to allow this annexation to go forward. And second, and I think importantly, just to affirm to the council on the record my commitment to come forward before the final reading with the expected petition to annex additional land to sort of clean up the part that's been moved in order to allow this to go forward. But anyway, just to affirm my commitment to cooperate in any way that's necessary to cause that to happen. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any. I do want to make one of the comment just for the record. The county was not just aware of this annexation coming as of August. They were aware for a long time before that, from personal conversations with me. So, you know, I don't understand why they came forward at the last minute without even an effort to contact me at all, but I just want you to know that's what they did.
All right, thank you, Mr. Payne.
Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of annexation? You may approach. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion to approve the ordinance to annex the property under Agenda Item 6.4.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any further discussion on Agenda Item 6.4? All right, with the knowledge that we are accepting Exhibit B as the proposed annexation property, as well as the understanding that there will be petition and some modifications by the second reading, I will ask council to approve Agenda Item 6.4. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? By like sign. Our motion carries 7-0. All right, now we are moving to Agenda Item 6.7. Mr. Massengill will be stepping out as he has a potential conflict, and so to avoid any issues there, he will be stepping aside on this vote. This is a resolution to consider, sorry, this is a resolution to consider approving LIDA's authorization for a sales tax revenue bond, and we will take discussion on this. I will turn it over to you, Ms. Rackinson.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we're going to have before us today Mr. John Osborne, Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and I believe, just as we've done in the prior item, he'll then turn it over to his financial advising firm and take you through this one. John?
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for allowing us to be here today. The past decade has been very good to Lubbock in terms of growth and opportunities, and we've been able to, over that time period, win a lot of projects where we help existing companies grow and new companies moved into town. We've been primarily able to cash fund all of that through our sales tax revenue bonds, or revenue funds that come to us. We have gotten to a point where some of our projects are now, we're having a lot more opportunities than we've ever actually even dreamed we could possibly have, where we would like to begin financing some of our utility and road infrastructure projects that we've got planned, as well as to assist us with some land purchases that would enable us to hopefully continue to grow our economic opportunities. We've been working very closely with Hilltop Securities to help us in this process, and Jason Hughes, the managing director for Hilltop Securities, is here to help go over the conversation we're having about bonding some of our sales tax revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Mr. Hughes, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, Mayor, thank you, Council. Good to be with you again. Jason Hughes, Hilltop Securities. You should have in front of you a presentation that looks like this. This is the exact same presentation that you have on your screen as well, and hopefully that can be brought up. That's okay. So, Mayor and Council, I'll go through this very briefly, certainly be happy to answer any kind of questions that you may have. But again, what we were talking about are the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds by LIDA. And so the start of this just goes through the statutory authority that LIDA has to issue sales tax revenue bonds. That's under Section 501, that authority to issue bonds. Within that same section, they also require that the supporting municipality approve anything that they do as it's related to debt obligation. So that's why we're before you today asking for that approval. Since these are solely repayable from and secured by LIDA's sales tax revenues, we also have to have statutory authority to pledge those and to use those sales tax revenues. And so that's found in Section 504 of the Texas Local Government Code. So once again, these bonds will be repaid by the 1/8th of 1 cent sales tax that LIDA collects on an annual basis. The one thing I do want to be very clear about is while we are before you again today for your approval of that, the LIDA sales tax revenue bonds, again, secured solely by that sales tax revenue, there's no claim on the city's ad valorem tax revenues, on the city's general sales tax, or any other revenues of the city. These, again, are city, beg your pardon, are LIDA's sales tax revenue bonds. Well, just wanted to stay there. Whenever we're looking at that, since that is our pledge and our repayment source, and one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure that we're looking at the recurring operating revenues and expenses that LIDA has. So these bonds are structured very conservatively in that we have structured them with a fixed interest rate, with level debt service. Even though LIDA's sales tax revenues from this year to the past went up almost 11%, if I'm not mistaken, again, we've not taken any kind of growth into account. So very conservatively structured. One of the things, federal tax law is very specific as far as the use of tax-exempt bond proceeds. We have some uses that fall outside of that, so we'll be issuing tax-exempt bonds and taxable bonds. And again, that's solely based on federal tax law. And then the last thing there, one of the things is LIDA has received indications of interest from local banks that they be approached, and they would like to participate in potentially buying those bonds. So that is our recommended method of selling, is doing a private placement and talking with the local banks. Couple of things that I would point out there, too, is there's the potential to receive more favorable terms from the local banks. But one thing I want to be very clear about is we have not approached them because we wanted to have LIDA's approval first, as well as city council's approval. So this just very briefly goes through the anticipated bond financing. Again, LIDA's sales tax revenues are what will be used to repay the debt service. So we've netted out the expenses. As you can see, they're $5.4 million, again, based on unaudited FY 2022 numbers is what's available to pay debt service. One thing that we are recommending is a minimum coverage target of 1.25x. So we believe that that would, should be the minimum. And as you can see there, we've looked at it not only based on current market rates but also current market rates plus 3/4 of 1%. So if rates do increase, and as you can see there in both cases, we have coverage of over 2x. So very strong coverage, again, by existing revenues with no growth included there. The last thing is just the anticipated timelines. We have been in front of the LIDA board twice, once to discuss the projects and the potential financing. The second time that we were in front of them was on Monday, the 28th, and that's when we had approval from their board for the reimbursement resolution. That simply allows them to start spending funds now, reimburse themselves later, once the bonds are sold. And then the other thing is for the parameter bond sale. And so as you can see there, we have parameters. Maximum amount of bonds to be issued is $32.5 million. That is a little bit larger because it does include a fully funded debt service reserve fund, and again, that would be one thing that we would try to negotiate with the banks. That maximum interest rate is 8%. That takes into account, again, the taxable component, so we have, once again, the tax-exempt and the taxable bonds to be issued. So that does take into account a higher rate, which is associated with taxable bonds. And then you can see there, the maximum repayment term of 22 years, and we actually should be well within that. So that's what we're asking for your approval of. The nice thing about the approval of the parameters is we have to meet each and every one of those parameters. So if there's any single one that is not met, then we cannot move forward. So hopefully that gives council comfort on that. Just if, assuming you approve today, we would look to put out the term sheet to local banks within a week's time. We would look to have those back by roughly mid-January, maybe a little bit before, and then hopefully, assuming successful sales, then we'd have funds in the bank by mid-February. So I know that was very quick that I went through that, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you have or provide more detail. Jerry Kyle, obviously, who is bond counsel to the city, is also bond counsel to LIDA, so he's here and can answer any questions from a legal perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I've got a couple of things, just, I believe you stated it, but let's just, I want to reiterate.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think you touched on, this does not affect the city's bond rating in any way, shape, or form.
No, sir, it does not.
All right. So there's no effect to the city on our bond rating?
Correct.
There's no net effect to our debt?
Correct.
And our debt number.
Correct.
That's really important. I think the citizens ask about, you know, our debt and look at our debt load quite often.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the biggest question, I think we talked in executive and to discuss here today openly, is if there were a default, or if something tragic happened, you know, who knows what the future holds, but there's zero recourse against the city of Lubbock if there were a default. That was, the obligation would still be that already proposed, or already, the 1/8th cent sales tax would be the recourse, correct?
Mayor, that is correct. And one thing I would just add to that is, in the very, very unlikely event that something happened to LIDA, that sales tax would continue on. So to your point, Mayor, yes, that 1/8th of 1 cent sales tax that LIDA currently levies would be available for the repayment of the bonds.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Actually, Mayor, I was about to ask and just wanted to get the reemphasis for those that are watching or tuning in online, and... those that are watching or tuning in online, and that's been answered, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
And LIDA is, you know, responsible for these bonds, but you explained that there was a tax-exempt element and a taxable. Can you explain the difference between those two and the percentages?
Yes, sir. So federal tax law states that if you have a certain amount of private use or private ownership, then the federal government requires you to issue taxable bonds. And so one of the things that we did early on is, along with LIDA staff, we got on the phone with Jerry, with his associate Ben, and with their tax counsel, and we went line item by line item through all of the anticipated projects. So in working with ORIC's tax counsel, that's where they said, we think that these are taxable projects, we think that these may be financed with tax-exempt. And Councilman, to your point, I apologize, I did not hit on this, on Slide 3, you see at the very bottom on the note, what we're anticipating is about $12.7 million in project proceeds from the tax-exempt, and then roughly $16 million from the taxable, again, based on those conversations of the projects with ORIC and their tax counsel.
And would taxable be like land purchases, or what?
Yes, sir. That is one component of the taxable, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
Mr. Hughes, you've indicated in here that the maximum interest rate that you've used is 8% and the maximum repayment term of 22 years. So I'm assuming that if those interest rates are less, you may adjust that term. Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we want to make sure is that we have as much flexibility as possible within reason. And I'll actually go back to Mr. Bowles, whenever he was talking about the interest rates. We put these parameters in place, so if we do see interest rates increase, we can still move if we need to move. If interest rates do go down, we can take advantage of more favorable rates. But those are the absolute limits. So our expectation actually in the structuring is anywhere from a 20 to 21 final term. We did, again, provide the 22 in case we had to delay in the sale. And certainly on the interest rate, that is really more based on the taxable component, since that taxable rate could be maybe 1.5 or 150 basis point, 1.5% beg your pardon, or 150 basis points higher. So that is really structured to maintain that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and not to beat the proverbial dead horse.
Yes, sir.
There is zero tax consequences on our taxpayer.
Yes, sir. One thing I would also say, Mayor, to that point, so whenever we put out that term sheet, we very specifically say, of course, we list through the pledge who the issuing entity, but there will be a specific statement that says, no taxes, revenues, anything else from the city are pledged to or available for repayment of these bonds.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can you say that again?
Hold on, let me see, let me get my phone here.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hughes, Mr. Osborne? Any other questions? All right, again, Mr. Massengill has recused himself from this vote. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.7? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Brayer.
Thank you.
Any further discussion of 6.7? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.7? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? By like sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, it is 2:52 on 12/6 of 22, and we will be adjourned.